So with that, I think I'll call to order the City of Washougal City Council Workshop for Monday, July 13th. And Rose, can you roll call, please?
Yes. Mayor Molly Costin.
Here.
Councilmember Boger. Councilmember Wagner. Councilmember Greenlee.
Here.
Councilmember Kutch.
Here.
Councilmember Russell.
She's here.
She's muted, but she is here. Councilmember Yost.
Here.
And Councilmember Suggs.
Here.
Oh, Councilmember Kutch, did I say you?
You did.
Yeah, twice.
Thank you.
So, and with that, we'll open up our first opportunity for public comments. So anyone who wishes to speak, if you could raise your hand so that Rose or myself can see you address the council with what, you know, comments, whatever comments you'd like to make. So do I see anyone who wishes to communicate with the council? I don't see anyone, so we'll move right ahead to new business. Administration 2020 Levy LID Lift Resolution, Fire and EMS. Dave, this is yours?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And Rose will load up the slide deck that we have for this, and then I'll walk us through that. Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a quick update on this topic. I think all of you are pretty well-versed in this, but I thought I would just run through some of the background information briefly to get us all re-grounded again in this topic. So we'll cover the expiration of our current LID Lift, the implications of various LID Lift scenarios moving forward. Just a reminder about our 2020 survey results. Then there's a proposed resolution that's in the packet. And then we can talk about next steps, and then of course, council discussion. Our current six-year LID Lift expires this year, as you know, and if no new LID Lift is put in place, that would result in a loss of approximately $171,000. Obviously, that would be a difficult situation for us. So again, no LID Lift would be a loss of about $171,000, and we'd have to potentially make some cuts to the fire and EMS program. And then you can see listed below that five different scenarios for various LID Lift levels from 10 cents to 27 and a half cents. It shows how much money would be brought in if such a LID Lift was to pass this November, starting with $239,000 all the way to 664. And it talks about what would happen if the LID Lift passed in terms of new resources. So 10 cents is the status quo, and it would not enable any new FTEs in that program, including the two that we've been paying for on a year-to-year basis. Whereas 15 cents would make permanent those two positions. These are the results from our recent community survey. I think I would draw your attention to the box at the bottom right, the text box there where it shows that when you add everything up, 82% of the survey respondents would support at least a 10-cent Levy LID Lift, and 60% would support at least a 15-cent LID Lift. But that support drops to only 44% at the next interval of 20 cents that we asked about. This is not a poll about a potential specific LID Lift, but it does provide a statistically significant data set to give you some insights into the community perceptions around a LID Lift and what it might do in the community. 50% plus one is what's necessary to pass a LID Lift. Here's a cabulation of what these various LID Lifts would do. The first column is how much the lift would be. Just as a reminder, we reviewed this several weeks ago. The second column shows what the total revenue would be. And I'm just noticing maybe the numbers are off by a couple thousand dollars from that last slide, but that's okay. It's all in the ballpark. And then what the impact would be. No LID Lift, of course, there's no revenue. We lose 171. And then the dime shows the status quo, new new FTE, and then so on for the larger LID Lift amounts. There's the support in the next column from our community survey. 82% again for a dime, 60% for 15 cents. The annual cost to the median home of $400,000 assessed valuation. You can see 10 cents is $40 annually, all the way to $110 annually for 27 and a half cents. The expiring Levy LID Lift is roughly seven cents right now. And so that would take $28 a year off the plate for the owner of a $400,000 home. And so the net annual median cost is shown in the last column. And for a dime, it would be basically a dollar a month at $12 annually. That would be the net change. Now, that's just for this little LID Lift, right? This is not in any way an indication of what would happen with the totality of somebody's property taxes, with all the various taxing difference districts and measures and all the nuances of how things would happen. But that gives you a snapshot. Your focus has been primarily on the 10 cents and 15 cents, given the results of the survey, I believe, as well as your preliminary conversations as we were waiting for the results of the survey. So the proposed resolution would place, it places either a six-year 10 cents or a six-year 15 cents LID Lift on the November 3rd, 2020 ballot. And if you noticed in the packet, you saw some colored highlights. One color would be for the 10 cents, and the other color was for the 15 cents. And whichever one you go with, a couple of the recitals are slightly different. A 10-cent LID Lift is a renewal, and so there's some language in the document about it being a renewal. Certainly, a 15-cent LID Lift would not be a renewal because it's a higher number, so the language is just a little different. And of course, the number, the numbers would be a little bit different. But based on your previous conversations, the council was trying to decide between 10 cents and 15 cents. So that is what was in the packet. Need council direction, obviously, at some point on the amount of the LID Lift. The deadline is August 4th, which is the date of the primary. Your last regular meeting prior to that date is in two weeks on July 27th, and that's when the resolution would be on your agenda for adoption. I think you could decide right up to that moment whether you want it to be 10 cents or 15 cents. I recall in your previous conversations that you were wanting to kind of have a feel for the economy and the pandemic and how things were tracking, how things were going. There was a lot of conversation about the stability and perceived safety, if you would, of asking for a dime. 80% support in the survey feels pretty good. 15 cents, still pretty good support at 60% in the survey. Again, it's not a poll. But some concern about a little bit of risk there, depending upon what's going on in November. So you were hoping to have some updated information here in the month of July about how things were trending and whether that might be informative to your decision to do 10 cents or 15 cents in this ballot. I think we are all aware that we're kind of stuck right now a little bit in terms of the opening of our economy and working through this pandemic because all of the data is kind of moving in the wrong direction, and we get to the next topic on the agenda. I'll have some updates on that. So I don't think the council needs to take any formal action. Of course, you can't take action here in the workshop setting. I don't think you need to take any formal action at the 7 o'clock meeting. It's not on your agenda. If you wanted to, you could direct which one of these resolutions, 10 cents or 15 cents, you wanted on the ballot. But I think, I think we could bring this document forward as it is on your agenda in two weeks. And then a motion and an ultimate decision of the council can just point to the language that you would want, whether it's the 10 cents language or the 15 cents language. And so with that, I'll turn it back to the mayor for any council discussion on this topic.
Okay, Paul, I see your hand up.
Just briefly, I wanted to mention that Brent has joined us.
I see.
I've been here for all but the first minute.
I'm frankly ambivalent. I could go with either one. At the moment, the stock market and the economy are completely out of sync. And in over the next two weeks, some substantial earnings will be reported. And I think that there's going to be a little better sense of how much deep due to the economy is in. So it may be in two weeks that 10 cents makes more sense, but if I were to choose today, I'd say 15. That's it.
Thanks, Paul. Anyone else?
My hand's up.
Ernie, okay, go ahead.
You can't see it? I'm sorry.
I can't, no.
I pushed it up. Dave, a question for you. What kind of a cushion would the 15 cents give us in a year? And I'm assuming that we just carry over any excess that we don't use for that purpose. So can you answer that one without having to juggle any numbers?
Yeah, I think so. I'm just, and Rose, you can keep this view up on the screen because I've got my presentation up on my, on my other device here. So I'm just going to scroll to that briefly, counsel, so I can get to the chart that shows the funds. Yeah, so a 15-cent Levy LID Lift, we'd spend all of it because, almost all of it, because it would support two new FTE. And we absolutely use every penny of that toward this program. A, to keep up with just the regular rate of growth in the program. As you can imagine, there are inflationary pressures in the program year over year, even for status quo services. The costs of that program don't go down. They go up even for the status quo. The labor costs, materials costs, all of the various costs. With one minor exception this year, which is kind of nice, but the CRESTA costs are kind of a little stagnant because CRESTA is doing that for us and using some reserves, actually. So we'll use, we'll use everything. And I don't think it would be accurate to say that there'd be a cushion of 15 cents.
Would that be, do you think that that would, those two FTEs would satisfy CAMUS? Or the police, or the fire department?
Not in the long run.
No, okay.
No, you know, the two FTEs, they've already brought onboard four.
Yep.
There's some vacancies right now, but notwithstanding the vacancies, their authorization in the budget is for four. And we've only agreed on a year-to-year basis to pay for two of those. So 15 cents would only cover two of those.
No, actually, okay. I'm leaning, I would lean toward the 15 cents, I think. I know we can make the decision at the last minute, but I think the 15 cents would be a good gesture toward CAMUS, and it would help us out, I think, in the long run. But that's just my only take on that. So I would go with the 15 unless something really changed.
All right, Alex, and then Brent?
Yeah, I think that was actually a really good segue, Ernie, because I have, if we're just talking about our community and, you know, putting in, doing that LID Lift, I'm much more comfortable with the 10 cent. But then knowing that this is an interlocal and that we're wanting to work with our partners and that it's year-to-year, I'm definitely leaning towards the 15 as well. I do love, just from like a, being able to get the information out, a buck a month is like such an easy sell, but at the same time, you know, in the spirit of our partnership with CAMUS, I feel like I'm definitely leaning toward the 15 as well. So that's my two cents.
Okay, Brent, and then Ray.
I look at it as a risk-reward kind of proposition. I think we're taking a pretty big risk if we go with 15. The economy, you know, is not, is not completely off the rails, but it's having some setbacks because of the new spikes. And that makes me very uncomfortable what it's going to be like in November. I would hate to have us go with 15 and have it lose, you know, 51-49 when we have an indication that if it was a status quo, it would pass 70, 80%. And we could just go back a year later if things improve and ask for another, another Levy LID Lift of 15 cents or whatever. So I would, just because I'm inherently a cautious person, I think I would lean towards the 10 cents.
And that, that was a point, Mayor, if I could, I forgot to mention, that's been part of your conversation, and CAMUS is aware that this has been part of the thinking, is you can always go back out again. You can try to get that base level of funding to ensure that we don't go backwards, and then the following year, go ask for whatever you want. And you're not risking the base level of funding. But I think the dime or the 15 cents are kind of, you know, in the ballpark of that base level of funding. But the council is right, there's, there's a little bit of risk with the 15 cents beyond a renewal at 10.
Well, and if we, I'm sorry. You're muted, Molly.
Go ahead.
I, I agree with Brent in the way, if, and if we can go back in a year and get what we think we need, if we go with the 10 cent now, we have a much better chance of, of the passing. If we don't pass the 60% or the 15 cent, I think we got nothing. It goes back to zero, doesn't it, David?
Yeah.
So, so I think we'd be better at this point to go with the 10 cent and then go back in a year because we'll know for sure what's going to happen with the economy or, you know, what's happening with the economy. And, and at least we'll have something. But if we go with the 15 and it doesn't pass, we got nothing.
Yeah, thank you, Ray. And I will say that for myself, I was, up until a couple of weeks ago, I was heavily leaning towards the 15 and feeling very confident that I thought our voters would approve that. But boy, seeing the amount of kind of agitation, the kind of feedback I've been getting, the kind of calls and emails I've been getting, I'm very concerned that people are just this constant state of kind of being half in and half out of commerce and regular life as we know it has been very challenging for all of us, of course. But I think it's going to be reflected in people's ability, not only their desire and their commitment, but their ability to pay more taxes. So I'm kind of leaning more towards the 10 cents at the moment. That's my own personal opinion, even though I would like to go with more.
I agree. I think it's a little scary for everyone right now because we don't know what the economy is going to do. We don't want to know what our state representatives are going to do, and there's rumors that they're going to try to pass all kinds of additional taxes, and people are concerned about that, a payroll tax. I mean, they're talking about, and if that happens, I think there's going to be a lot of people that are going to be anti-anything. I think if we pass the 10, or put the 10% now, it's, it's the same amount. We're not asking for any additional funds and then come out next year for additional, if they're willing to pay for more firemen. I think that's the safest bet now.
Yeah, Molly, I think that that would be true. And if we go with the 10 cents now, we could go with five or six cents next year, maybe, David? We don't have to make it five cent increments, do we?
No, you can pick, you can pick whatever gradation you want, and you wouldn't be limited to just going up to, you know, a total of 15. You could, you could ask for, you know, another 30 cents if you really wanted to. I mean,
But I think, I think that, I see, I see that if we go with the 10 cents, that status quo, and that might even be hard to pass. I don't know. I think the 15 will pass. But the following year, we, we could really recruit the fire department to get out and garner votes for that. I think that would be very helpful, but that's just a question I had in regards to the amount we can go for the next year, if need be.
Okay, so Paul, and then Ray.
Brent, and Ray, and Molly, you've convinced me. 10 cents, because I was really kind of biting my tongue and swallowing because I really think that the, part of the problem here is that the fire, the firefighters will, if you give them an inch, they won't take a mile, they'll take 10. And, and so that's, personally, that's, that sticks in my craw. So, but Brent, Ray, Molly, Julie, Ernie, you've convinced me.
Ray.
And I like, I like Alex's thing about a buck a month. I think that makes sense to a lot of people. And it's, it's a catchphrase, but I think it'll work. So.
Well, and I think it's fair to, CAMUS knows that we have this survey results now, and those people that are advocating for more firefighters and dig deep, well, then they need to do some outreach and some, you know, door-to-door to convince people that it's worth the additional tax money in order for it to pass.
Molly.
Yes, sir.
You know, I've, I've studied public opinion polls. In fact, I've done, designed a public opinion poll, and it worked out pretty well. And I can tell you that my reading of that, those numbers and the way the questions were phrased, that's a soft 60%. Who would go with 15? And that was before all, most of this stuff happened. So I actually expect it would probably lose. But the only question I have, Dave, and you can assess it, and maybe Molly, you can chime into. What do you think CAMUS's reaction to us only going with 10 cents will be?
Well, they're aware, they're aware of the results. You know, we shared those with them at the time we were sharing them with you. And I have informed everyone over there, you know, what you're looking at, 10 or 15, with a leaning towards 10, especially given the challenges that we're facing now that we weren't before, with the notion that there's another opportunity in the following year. And I think they understand it. I think they would like us to come up with the money maybe in a different way. You know, we just have different situations. And I think they try to put themselves in our shoes, and they hope we would put ourselves in their shoes. But this is going to be a challenge moving forward in terms of the ability to pay and trying to find a mutual level of service that will work. So I think there'd be disappointment, certainly. They want to move forward with that program, but I also think that they want to be very deliberate and very careful about exactly how we grow that program, with what timing and in what way. So I think, I think it'll be okay. Just good, open, transparent communication is really key, and that's what we've been doing.
And is it most of the growth coming from CAMUS and most of the need?
Yes.
Right now, CAMUS is going.
Coming from Washougal.
But when we had the master plan done, the analysis looks at our planning documents and assumes a certain amount of growth over a certain amount of time. Certainly going to have some growth. And you may recall from that master planning, these, these additional positions aren't necessarily tied to growth. That's a whole nother concept.
Yeah.
Most of these dynamics are around the existing case on the ground as we speak and various response times and various coverage dynamics measured against various standards.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say that I'm sure CAMUS is going to be a little bit disappointed, but certainly they must understand the situation that we've got. We're being good partners in, in our, really, and really trying to commit to the program. And with the awareness that we can go out next year for an additional amount, I, I think that'll solidify that partnership a little bit.
And I just had one quick comment about just sort of the, I know as a city, we're just providing the facts and that there can be committees for and against, and there can be, you know, that sort of more, that political side of it. So in terms of what we present, but I think either way, a big part of the conversation, if I remember correctly from when I was on the Public Safety Committee previously, that I think, Mayor Molly, you mentioned that the majority of the calls do come into Washougal with, because there's the different weighted systems for who pays what and how it gets all broken down. But, but that a majority of those calls were mess calls. So looking at this, because I think people hear like, oh, more firefighters. Well, we don't have that issue. We're not a big city. You know, we're not having all these fires all the time. But to really be able to have that conversation around what these individuals are doing and the services that they're providing, and I think within the context of COVID and the pandemic, I think that, I mean, I'm definitely still kind of torn between the 10 and 15. More comfortable with 10 for Washougal, but I think that, I think that that needs to be a part of the conversation. I think that's a, there's a way that we can do that that isn't, you know, weighting it, just providing those stats and that information, saying it's, it's not just putting out fires, it's also, you know, helping you on the medical side too. So.
Right. I agree, Alex. You know, and those conversations are going to take a little more than just, you know, street signs and things like that. So I mean, they're more, they're, they're longer-term conversations that we need to have with the community about what those services actually provide and what they pay, what we pay for as citizens, as taxpayers. So that's good. So other comments?
I guess I have one question. I know the proposal that, okay, I'm blanking on his name right now. John Spencer put together about creating that RFP. Can that be part of the conversation with CAMUS? Or will that be part of the conversation, Dave?
I think you're referring, counselor, to the RFA, the Regional Fire Authority?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely. I think that will be a continuing part of the conversation. It is part of the conversation and will continue to be.
Okay.
One of the options.
Yeah, I think everything has just kind of slowed down a bit with COVID and all the challenges we've had three or four months. I think the whole fire issue is just put, not on the back burner, but a little bit behind the priority issues. So we'll continue to work.
Yeah.
So good conversation on this. Are we ready to move on to our second topic, which is the COVID-19 update? Okay, let's go.
Okay, that one is mine as well, and Rose will place up that slide deck, and then we'll walk through that one. Okay, thank you, Rose. Mayor, council. Mayor Council, our, our traditional update now on the COVID-19 response. So we'll talk about the status of the emergency orders. Some of this will be review, the status of state and county phase opening, our operational response. And then I think some more substantive discussion around budget update cares, mostly cares funding and possible support of small business in the community. So our emergency orders have not changed since your last meeting. The declaration continues and is in place until the emergency is over. The emergency order 2020-06, which you adopted a little more than a month ago, is what is riding now. And it has us following the governor's orders on most of the operational items. It leaves emergency leave intact until Phase 2 so far. And it extends private mortgage foreclosure, commercial eviction and residential inspection limits until Phase 3. And it's tied to the governor's proclamations in terms of its timing. As you know, we've been in Phase 2 for some time now. We made application to go into Phase 3 late last month. And right at the time that that was happening, the governor placed a pause on all movements from one phase to the next across the state. We are currently on pause with Phase 3. The current pause expires at the end of this week, 16th or 17th in that timeframe. It's unknown what will happen, whether that pause will be extended or whether new applications will be accepted by the governor and whether they will have, you know, new parameters or not. And then Phase 4 would be three weeks later at the soonest. But as you know, the governor has indicated that Phase 4, which is essentially no limitations at all, is likely not going to happen until there is a vaccine or an effective treatment. I can, this is something you've seen before. I won't go over it, but those are our phases and what you, what's allowed and not allowed in each of them. Here we are still in Phase 2. Our city building facilities are closed to the public. We are open, but closed to public access. We're providing services, of course. We are allowed to open them in Phase 3. The team's been working diligently, diligently to prepare ourselves for that. But every community that we've engaged with, including all communities across Clark County, don't intend to just fling the doors wide open the day that we're in Phase 3 and have people coming in without any limitations. There are lots and lots of limitations. It'll be phased, it'll be partial. Telework is still very strongly encouraged in Phase 3. Some of the other information, we've covered all of this information before. Nothing's changing there. We are working on protocols for sports courts and playgrounds to be open sometime soon. We had been looking at Phase 3. Most communities in Clark County have been looking at Phase 3. As Phase 3 continues to sort of move away from us, there's been some rethinking of that on these particular items. So for example, Vancouver has opened, opened those up with some restrictions. So a lot of signage that we need to pull together and some different things. So the team is working on that and we will be opening those. We are still obviously in a virtual council meeting setting. The governor's proclamation around the Open Public Meetings Act has been extended through August 1st. We essentially cannot meet. We can meet like this. And even after moving into Phase 3, you're, you're allowed to have gatherings of 50 people. There will be so many requirements on how that would happen that when you contemplate that, what that will be like, frankly, a Zoom meeting feels like it's more effective based upon everyone needing to be six feet apart, everyone having to have a mask on, the way we have to lay out our room and the limited number of people that could attend. And then you all have masks on, trying to engage with your masks on, using the mics, conversations with several council members and the mayor's kind of like, gee, you know, I think the Zoom platform is probably going to be more collaborative than that, unfortunately. And then, of course, events are not happening because of the limitations in Phase 3. When we do get to Phase 3, I'm not going to say if, but when we get to Phase 3, I just don't know when that will be, then things change a little bit and we kind of discussed that and talked about that. I will say that earlier this afternoon, the mayor and I were both on what is now this semi-monthly, or I guess the bi-weekly call, countywide, where Dr. Melnick does a briefing. There's another briefing he does with executive folks weekly on Thursdays, where we get into some nitty gritty details type things. But in his briefing today, he did not feel a lot of confidence that, you know, at the end of this week, we'd be raring and ready to go with a Phase 3 application. And he walked us through almost all of the metrics that are measured as part of a Phase 3 application. And the bottom line is that we're going in the wrong direction. We're going backwards in all of those metrics. In fact, in several of the metrics, the numbers are worse than they were in early March or mid-March when the initial orders began to take effect. So that's very challenging. Now, he did say and has said that we can overcome that with all of us doing our part to really practice physical distancing, wearing masks, and together that we can flatten the curve again instead of taking it in the wrong direction. So anyway, we will be in Phase 3. We just don't know when that will be. And I'm hopeful for all of us that things will turn in the opposite direction soon. Where's Phase 4? Is going to be a little bit further out, I believe. So I won't spend a lot of time talking about that, but that is the elusive Phase 4, I guess, that we're all wanting. Really, Phase 5 is what we really want, right? We don't even have to talk about the phases anymore. Or maybe that's forever, you know, we're always going to be in a phase of some kind. So Phase 5. Though we still have our virtual EOC operating. It's essentially just almost like a, just a functioning operating department, if you would, where people are on this special team working on this issue. Really proud of the team and how they're dealing with the myriad of issues that we're having to face. So that's continuing and we're closely coordinating with all of our partners. We're still open for business. I think that's really important for everybody to know. We are serving our community. All of our essential services continue to function, still issuing permits, making inspections.
I have a question, Dave. Why is it that the permit center is only open Monday through Thursday?
Well, it's not open to the public ever.
Right.
Right, and so in, in order to continue to promote physical distancing and try to keep people safe, we've been using a 410 schedule at City Hall and at the permit center. Well, the permit center is brand new, basically, right?
Yeah, yeah.
But well, it's not a brand new building, but it's a brand new service center for us. And that was a way to help us to promote physical distancing in our facilities. A lot of people continue to telework. I mean, there's a lot of telework going on. You know, if you come into our facilities, it's not like everybody's there.
Yeah.
Trying to hide behind their cube walls or in their offices. A lot of people, if they can, are teleworking. And we, we're adapt, we've adapted to that, continue to be effective in getting our work done.
Has, have there been any complaints that people aren't able to set an appointment on Fridays?
Have not heard, I have not heard any complaints at all about the provision of any of our services. Mitch, Mitch hasn't heard anything either. We just communicate with our cadre of customers and we keep them well informed. I think they're, they're tracking really well with us.
Okay.
Yeah, Dave, I was able to get a good 25 cent tour of the facility last week. And it looks like they're moved in and doing fairly well and being able to function, which I think is beneficial, I think, at this point in time with the situation we're in, that they have that space. So it was good.
It's a lifesaver. Having that space is just absolutely a lifesaver in the current condition that we're dealing with. It would have been very challenging to meet the kinds of requirements that are in place to bring people back into the office. Everybody would have been, almost everybody would have been wearing masks all day, literally all day long, just because you can't do that. We're trying not to have to do that. We certainly would do that if we needed to do that. And we will wear them in compliance, absolutely, as it's required. But if you can keep folks isolated, LNI's got very specific requirements about how you can deal with that in an office setting. Certainly at the operations center and with our field personnel, those dynamics are different. And there's probably more mask wearing going on in those contexts than you would see in the office and professional setting. And of course, at our police station, there's probably a little bit more mask wearing when, when folks are gathered there versus when they're, you know, out on patrol, for example. But very challenging set of circumstances that's going to go on for some time more, it appears. We are able now to do some appointments so that folks can come in and do some fingerprinting around the concealed carry permits. Couple of other agencies are, are doing things similarly as well in that regard. So on the budget front, the news continues to be relatively good news. The updates that we received, and I communicated to that to you previously, that the June sales tax numbers, which were reflecting April's results, indicated that although it's behind where we had budgeted to be, it is nowhere near what we thought or what we projected. Now, that's just the first month. We need to see in a couple of weeks what, how we're looking for the May data. But Jen and I are cautiously optimistic that what we hoped would happen, that we would have been more conservative than we needed to be in our initial cut estimates, will turn out to be the case.
For April, so that's a month of full lockdown.
Right. One of the, one of the pieces of feedback that's been rolling around in my professional is that there was a lot of federal assistance. And there is, continues to be a lot of federal assistance. Some of that expires at the end of this month. There's some different, different dynamics going on and what will be the impact of that? The federal government really propped up the economy, if you would, right? To the tune of 3 trillion, 3 trillion, I think it was, right? It's hard to say that number dollars. Though we're cautiously optimistic, but I think that's very good news. We are able to expend that full allocation of cares dollars internally. In a few minutes, there'll be conversation about whether we, how we want to use that potentially externally. So as you know, we've eliminated furloughs. We're restoring seasonal employees. We have a few on and we're trying to get some more on. Restoring some of the pavement management that had preliminarily been cut. And then if things continue to track, Jen and I talked about, you know, this conversation a month from now and then maybe the month after that, potentially being able to restore further cuts. And there is definitely the potential for the use of cares funds for community support. And you've really focused on the small business side of that. So I will walk through that again and that, and as per your request, there is a staff recommendation about that after that. So a little bit of new information. We have mentioned this in passing before, but the county Community Development Block Grant Program got additional CDBG funding as part of the CARES Act. So the CARES Act's got multiple sections and one part of it had to do with additional funding into that program. And the county, with the advice of the advisory board upon which I sit, asked that that money go into a small business program. They asked the county for additional funding coming out of the same flavor of CARES money that we're talking about, the 495 that we get. The county, I don't want to get this number wrong, but it's, I thought it was like $26 million. I think that's what it is. Don't quote me on that number, anybody, but.
I'm writing it down.
Yeah, a significantly higher amount. Now, they have a public health function, right? And a number of other health and human services functions. And so the per capita allocation was greater than what it was for cities, and that makes a lot of sense. But they were successful in getting, I think, another $500,000 toward that program. So there's somewhere in the range of $700,000, I think, 6, 7, 800,000 dollars that's going to be deployed in a small business grant slash loan program. I think I want to emphasize grant in that, but the details are to follow. It should be available in less than a month. There are some restrictions on those funds, though. I don't believe any business, just any business would be eligible. It has to be pretty small. And there are some real income parameters around the business owner. Because if you think about this Community Development Block Grant Program, the eligibility for that is an income-driven eligibility, low mod income. So it's going to be within those confines. Also heard the city of Vancouver is, is going to be doing something similar with some of theirs. And it looks like Mercy Corps, who was awarded a grant to do some small business support prior to all of this happening, they have a fairly robust program in this regard. And so they're most likely going to be the provider for that. That was interesting because you didn't, when you hear that, that name, you don't necessarily go to that sort of program, right? When you think about what they do. So that's great. So I just wanted you to know that that's going to be available on a countywide basis outside of the city of Vancouver through the county, and then the city of Vancouver will have their own. There are eligible cares, small business expenses. And since the last time we met, there was some new guidance from Treasury on that. And I'll get to that in a minute. But a couple of the things that can be done is assistance communicating public health information. And this would be things like signs or table tents or floor decals or other sorts of communication where the restrictions and the protocols and the parameters would be part of the message. So it's really public health communication and that is clearly an eligible expense under the cares and a collective action on behalf of small businesses in our community to provide branded public health information. And so that's clearly when we can do. And on the next slide, you'll see a little bit more detail about that. We can also in, provide personal protective equipment. For example, branded face masks, maybe for employees at our, our small businesses in our community, where we could have some sort of a branding campaign about Waschugle. And face masks could be produced that have that branding. And if small business owners and their employees wanted to wear those, it could be sort of promotional while at the same time being a PPE. We could certainly also provide other PPE, just generic stuff. We could stockpile some masks and provide those to small business owners so that they don't have to go procure those on their own. We could do a direct grant program to cover the cost of business interruption. And then the last one here is along the lines of what we were talking about before. There's some nuance as to whether or not a marketing program would be eligible for the current cares dollars. When we met last, there, we were really skeptical that that would be the case. And in fact, Commerce, who's deploying these funds in our state, as to whether or not that would be an eligible expense. But wouldn't you know, in short order, after we met, there's new guidance from Treasury in response to some questions that they've been getting. And it was in a context. And the guidance basically indicates that we could do some marketing as long as it's geared to. As long as it's geared to sort of a bringing back business lost due to COVID. In a context of potentially communicating things that promote a safe experience in your community, but it cannot be a longer-term marketing campaign. So there's some real nuance in there about exactly how that would work. And you would be trying to attract folks essentially back to your community. Now, the specific guidance in Treasury was, was around tourism promotion and drawing tourists back into your community. In my email conversation with Commerce, kind of floated it to be essentially a bring back the business marketing campaign. But be very careful that it couldn't be construed in any way as a longer-term marketing campaign. So if, if the campaign sort of transcends things, then you could run into problems in the audit. Would be like, wait a minute, you know, you just used this as a way to do a new marketing campaign long-term for your community and that would be inappropriate under the terms of the act. So stirring all of that together, there is a staff recommendation for any support that we would have for small businesses in our community using CARES dollars. So here's that recommendation. Certainly, as we discussed, it would be providing assistance, communicating public health information. We've received some quotes around signs, banners, table tents, floor decals, Aboard signs, number of different sort of ways to communicate. The design would be done in-house. Following off of communications that have already been put together by the county's Joint Information Center, and then we could customize it to our branding. And the range of prices there, depending upon what we do and how many units is in that 2,500, maybe to 7, it says 7,300. Somewhere in that ballpark gets us quite a bit of that type of product. It's about $6 a pop for branded face masks. So if we did 500 of them and pass them out to businesses across our community and particularly the ones that are public facing and, and tried to promote our community in that way, that would cost $3,000. And then it's our recommendation that we do a direct grant program to cover the costs of business interruption to our businesses so that the small businesses can decide how to use those funds any way that they would choose, including if they decided to pool together in a either tightly or loosely as a business association, if you would, to do some marketing. But for us to engage on that marketing program ourselves, we felt like the nuances of the tourism slash bring businesses back, short-term, why is it safe? Versus the prohibition clearly articulated by Treasury that it be, not be a long-term marketing program, just introduces some challenges in doing that. And so we deferred to this. So I think first and foremost, we would suggest doing the first two that you see here. For sure, based upon the council's previous indication that there was some modest amount of the CARES funds that you wanted to use. And then if you wanted to go further than that, that there be some amount that would go into a grant program. Don't have the details for that, but basically borrow good practices from some other communities across the country and stand something up ourselves. So that is the staff recommendation. And with that, I would turn it over to council discussion, but maybe I'll leave this slide up. Maybe Rose for a little while, leave that slide up just for reference for the council as they're thinking about this.
Thank you.
Mayor Colston?
If I can ask a question first, I'm assuming that the branded face masks are washable and reusable. They're fabric masks, not, not disposable masks. Is that?
Yes. Yeah, six bucks a pop. I believe it's the reusable fabric face coverings. Yep.
Okay.
And are, are they that expensive? I wouldn't think it'd be that expensive, more like $3 a pop, but.
We'll keep trying, but that's what we've gotten so far.
Even the disposable ones are 50 cents a piece. I know as a business owner, yeah, they're expensive.
And if it's a, if it's a KN95, they're more like four and a half dollars on up.
Yeah.
And that's just white.
I kind of support the, definitely the first two, and I'd love to be able to support the third bullet with direct grants. If we have some relatively, relatively small bucket of money to do so. I, I don't know what Camus is doing, but I know Carrie Schulstad at DCA, I'm on her email list now. And she's been doing a really good job, I think, of trying to keep many of the Waschugle businesses included in some of the things that she's sending out. So I really support her for that. So I will just ask for other opinions on this. And anybody else, anything else they want to say?
Looks good to me.
Okay.
I agree with you, Molly, although I wonder if, just to be fair, would we need to set up some sort of ranking or, you know, if it's a small pot of money and we get more requests than is available, how do we decide who gets the grant money and who doesn't? That would be my concern.
Yeah, I think there's some ways to actually prioritize those. So it's not just the first 10 that apply that get it all.
My problem is that if you look at, on a dollar value, who's been most impacted? It's the Pendleton Outlet Store. Is that really where you want to spend your money?
Well, is that really true? Because my husband was saying, most of their sales are international and in specialty boutiques. So, so I don't know.
Specifically, the Pendleton Outlet Store in Waschugle that people cannot go into. If you're talking about the.
Oh, they can go into it now. I see people walking in there all the time right now with face masks.
But in any case, they or Wesley Ford are going to be the, the gorillas in the room in terms of loss of, of business interruption.
But they, they, those, those large businesses also would most likely have insurance for business interruption. Whereas the smaller businesses sometimes can't afford that luxury.
So we're back to choosing winners and losers.
That's unfortunately, that's unfortunately difficult when you, the situation when you have to do direct grants.
I, yeah, I, I don't like direct grants at all. One thing that the Waschugle Business Association is noodling around, along with Lori Reed and some other people, is to put a banner up at the banner site, River Road and essentially C Street that says something about Shug Strong, Think Local, whatever. And, but then it would have a Velcro space on it for a, for a, so you could change a business every week. And so you could say, our bar is now open for takeout. And it strikes me that that meets the standard for immediate promotion as opposed to long-term. Pendleton Outlet Store is now open for curbside. Wesley Ford is now open for service. Any one of those, because of the now open, meets the standard for the interruption. And, and so that's, that's one thing that's being noodled around. WBA has a balance. They, they basically were going to print a bunch of event calendars, handouts, and canceled that order, but had made a deposit. And so that deposit still exists and it could buy the banner and some of the stick-ons that we're talking about. So that's one thing that WBA is talking about. But as I said, direct grants, I think that's just a can of worms. That's all.
Thank you, Paul. Other comments about this? I think it seems to be in general agreement, definitely with the first two items. And then maybe the third item, we need to have more discussion on this topic.
Yeah. And I think just a, a brief point, I definitely agree with you on that. The first two seem pretty straightforward and those, those numbers are doable, I think. Especially just with the, the mandates on businesses to not allow customers, at least like customer-facing businesses, to not allow people to come in without a mask. And that could, that's created a little bit of tension. Luckily, for the most part, at least in my experience, folks are being pretty respectful of that, but it does put a lot of stress on the employees specifically who are having to go through that every day. So I think that would be really helpful and a really good gesture from the city. And we have such an awesome logo. We have incredible in-house design. I mean, I just think it could be a beautiful, but really functional and helpful product. I definitely like, well, so with, going back to what Dave said during his presentation, we wouldn't have to reinvent the wheel in terms of how to get a program up and running. I, I think you said, Dave, that we looked at some other communities like, that have already done it and just cater it to what works best in Waschugle. So I think, you know, at the end of the day, like business owners, we're, we're risk takers. We know that there's always a winner and a loser. We know that we're not the only game in town. So I think that, I can't speak for all of us, but I think that there's just sort of this inherent like risk that you take. And so I, I think it's, we shouldn't worry about this, you know, idea of winners and losers, because I think anything at this point helps. And I also really like the idea and think it, it needs some, some more noodling, as, as Paul said, in terms of the potential for the grants being awarded to businesses, but then businesses encouraged to pool that money, because whatever it is, it's not going to, you know, it's not going to pay your rent for six months, which would be great. But I think there's some really cool opportunities, kind of, and when you put it back into the business owner's hands and say like, okay, we got this little bit of a kickstart for you. What are you guys going to do with it? And I think, I think there's already some good ideas circulating just amongst the, amongst ourselves. So I think it's really good work and I, I appreciate the staff recommendation on it. And I'm excited to see what we do.
Thank you, Alex. That's good information. Is there anybody else who wants to talk about this? I think, I mean, I'm hearing some real consensus around one and two. Definitely more conversation about the direct grant. So we are really, you know, through with this conversation, then we'll move on to our second opportunity for public comments. So if there's anyone in the audience who would like to address the council, raise your hand. I see Dr. Martha Martin has her hand raised. Good evening, Martha.
Hold on, gotta push right buttons. Okay, there we go. Good evening, everyone. It's what an interesting format when you're talking with everyone and they're looking right at you the whole time. It's really interesting. Anyway, I wanted to say thank you today for mentioning the building, that it's a lifesaver, because it kind of was always a lifesaver building. Being a former fire station. So now it's performing another duty that's a lifesaver. So I'm so glad that it's working out for you. And of course, it's still going to continue to be a lifesaver for us as we move forward, because it's going to help our revenue stream as well. So what a win-win. I love it when there's collaborations that work like that. Thank you very much. Okay. So that was my ECFR hat. I'll take that off now. I'm going to put my psychologist hat back on and I think probably Julie can agree with me on this one issue, that when you're talking about businesses getting back up and running, I had a long talk with my landlord about how to make our building safe so that I could return to my office. And it's quite elaborate and almost untenable to the point where I was looking at, how do I even purchase one of those anti-disinfectant machines that clear the space and the air? Because I have no ventilation in my office. There's no doors, windows that open outside. It's all through a ventilation system that goes throughout the entire building. So they make those. In order to make a business office safe, I would have to purchase that for $500. So that's an expense when you're talking about what can businesses, what do they need those grants for? You know, well, there's an item for you. In order to make an office safe enough so that you can keep your customers safe, you have to disinfect the air practically. It's just a consideration that folks don't think about. Those of us that are not big businesses like Pendleton, definitely we take a hit during this time. I've been doing all of my work from home, as Julie, I imagine you're trying your best to do it as well. And I've asked all my clients if they're okay with that for a while. They said they were okay with this until there was no longer an issue with COVID. But that still leaves people out there that don't want to go into counseling because they're not used to this. They're trying, but it's really hard for them. So just letting you know, those businesses that are kind of behind the scenes, I don't think I want a banner across C Street that says Martha's Open for Business. I really don't. Seriously. Oh no, Julie, would you mind that for yours?
Doesn't know, because my office is in Vancouver anyway.
Yeah, so that wasn't doing good anyway, right? Yeah. But I mean, it, it sounds really not helpful, but.
Well, restaurants, it might be helpful.
Oh, absolutely. The visibility for a restaurant. But there's those of us that aren't visible like that on purpose.
Yes.
That's what we, that's our.
We don't take walk-ins.
No, not at all at this point. No, you got to escort them from the, from the parking lot into your office and then out again. Anyway, just food for thought about things you might not have thought of in regards to what businesses need kind of outside the box, that maybe you'll have to gather those ideas from other people. And that's it. Thank you so much, everyone, for doing this. I know this is hard.
Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. That's good information. I hadn't thought about those kind of things. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to the council tonight? All right. Seeing no one, we'll move right on to reports and communications. Mr. Scott, Dave, city manager.
I'll defer.
As will I. I'll defer to our council meeting, city council, just.
Molly, Molly, can I go first since I have to leave?
Yes, sir.
I had a question regarding the letter we got about the water line going to the rock quarry outside the city limits. Where are we on that, Dave? Or is, is that really a non-issue?
Can I communicate with you?
Offsite. Yeah. I emailed you and asked you to call me after the meeting tonight. That'd be great. That's all I have. Thank you. And you're doing a great job. And the building looks great over at 39th Street. Maybe we need to come up with a name for it or something. Molly's House.
Permit Center.
Molly's House.
Permit Center.
See you at seven.
Okay. Thank you, Ernie. Anyone else wishing to make comments or reports? Paul?
A quick question, since both Trevor and Mitch are here. The waterfront trail, does that use any park impact fees?
No, I believe it's only transportation impact fees. This isn't Mitch or Trev, but the park impact fees are being used or are currently budgeted for the Schmidt Ballfields.
Is that your recollection, Trev?
Yeah. Yeah, it's TIF. We actually made some revisions to our capital plan to make it TIF-eligible.
Okay. I sure would like to have at least some nominal park impact fees there. And then the other thing, I just want to observe. Skamania County went to Phase Three. Harvard University has published a nationwide map down to the county level. As of the 11th of this month, the seven-day rolling average for Skamania County is 17.8 cases per 100,000. Clark County, which is in Phase Two, it's 3.3. So it's worse than five times, it's more than five times worse in Skamania County than it is in Clark County at this point. So I personally. Than it is in Clark County at this point. So I personally. I suspect that we're looking at mid-August, if not later, for Phase Three. That's it.
I, I have one question, Molly, and Dave, you might know the answer to. It seems like some of those metrics are going to be almost impossible to meet. Because isn't one of the metrics require that we have less than two point five percent of cases?
Um I'd have to go back and look at all those metrics because it's not my area of expertise. Two point five percent of what?
Of total cases per, per hundred thousand.
The, the metric on the number of cases is, on a fourteen-day rolling average. Uh no more than twenty-five per one hundred thousand population. So it's not a population. There, there's some percentages around. Um. Hospital use and hospital capacity, some percentages around uh. Contact tracing. Have to go back to Dr. Mel. You know, if you go to the Washington DOH website, it, it's got a great presentation of all of those metrics.
Right. But are they looking at total hospitalizations? Because a lot of those are surgeries that are scheduled that aren't COVID-related too.
They are looking at all of those metrics, uh the total hospitalizations.
Yeah. The, the problem, of course, is, I mean, as we've learned from Texas, that they're now having to do triage. And only. And something on the order of eighty percent of the cases. That are requiring hospitalization are not COVID-related.
Yeah.
But, but they're also not elective surgeries. So I mean, it's a heart attack or a.
Other issue.
Automobile accident or something like that that's consuming a hospital bed.
Uh huh, uh huh. Anyway, it's frustrating, I think, for all of us.
It is absolutely frustrating for all of us.
So I know, I'm, I'm thanking my stars that I'm not in Texas.
Yeah, or Arizona.
Or Florida.
Uh anyway, I, I think I do believe since we have completed the work of our City Council workshop tonight. That we are adjourned until seven PM. So see you all in forty-six minutes.
Sounds good. Bye.
Thank you. Good night. Well, for one.
Farewell for now.
Thank you.